I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us this evening. Let the record show that all members of the city council are present this evening. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is a commendation that I'm going to call on our chief of police, Bruce Lang, who is going to present Sergeant Derek Housak for his actions. Chief?
Mayor and council, thank you very much. I'm going to read this so I don't mess it up, but I was probably still messing it up. On August 4th at approximately 2:00 in the morning, Sergeant Housak responded to 12:50 Lakeview Lane to assist the Gage County Sheriff's Office engaged county rural fire with an active structure fire. Southeast Communications advised the homeowner, later identified as Joe Armstrong, was attempting to go back into the residence. Sergeant Housak was first on location, was able to direct Deputy Paxton to where the scene was. Joe and his wife, Manell Armstrong, were able to get their two young children out of the residence before law enforcement arrived. Joe was attempting to get their dog out of the residence before the fire moved from the garage to the house. Deputy Paxton attempted to retrieve the dog, but was unable to breathe due to the thick smoke which was starting to fill the house. Joe was certainly still willing to risk his own life to retrieve the dog, but he was stopped. Sergeant Housak's quick thinking, under stress, worked flawlessly as Housak retrieved his gas mask from his patrol vehicle, which would allow Housak to breathe inside the residence. Sergeant Housak is a canine handler and knows firsthand that pets are not just animals, but a part of the family. Housak put on the gas mask and went into the residence and was able to locate the dog hiding under a bed. Sergeant Housak rescued the dog, returned it to the family. The house was a total loss, however, due to Sergeant Housak's heroism, the Armstrong family remained intact. And for that, he is receiving the meritorious service award tonight. And I think it's worth noting, he was put in for this award by his subordinate officers on that shift. And I think that's commendable in and of itself, so with that.
Very good. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. Next is a presentation by the Gage County Foundation and members of the Gage County Foundation are with us this evening. And who is the individual, the spokesman? Mr. Petrowski?
Yes, sir.
Come on up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening and do what we're doing now. To give you a little history, the foundation is currently celebrating its 40th year in existence here for the, in the community. And with that, we thought it would be nice to do something on a large scale to benefit the community and the Beatrice area. So I asked the board to come up with any ideas that they may have. And Greg Leach came up and said that the city was doing some, doing some work and that Mr. Peethaw would like to visit with us on the possibility of using that as our project. Mark did come to one of our meetings and did a great job in the presentation of the pictures and the drawings and what we envisioned there at the Standing Bear Trail Park. And we voted at that time to support that project and that we would be willing to give the city the money when they wanted it. And Tobias called and says, well, where is her? We're ready. But no, we're very pleased to have that in the community and I'm very pleased that the board took that challenge on and that we as a foundation over 40 years grew to where we can give back to the community. But I'd like, we'd like to present a check to the City of Beatrice for $50,000 for the project there at the Standing Bear Trail. And appreciate it. And we've been by there a number of times. And it really is shaping up to be a nice addition to the city. And we're proud to be part of that. And thank you for allowing us to do that.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor, come on down.
So are you mashing that, Don? Is that a mashing?
What's that?
Are you mashing?
No, no. It's a mashing.
Greg is. It's his idea.
It's convenient for...
Where are you going to go?
I don't know. Come here in between. We'll get Greg behind us, but...
Look, look. Trying to hide me?
Yeah. I'm used to Pete. I won't say that. Okay. Let's turn around this way so Betty can get a picture.
Can you get Leach in there okay?
I can get his bear sign.
So feel free to make that an annual thing, Don.
Well, it's up to the board. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you again. We're looking forward and then hopefully this spring, we'll be coordinating along with the chamber and the ambassadors and we'll try to have a formal ribbon hanging to officially open up the park as we're getting ready for the next spring and summer months and years of enjoyment to come. But thank you and everybody have a good holiday season. Be safe and healthy.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much and we'll move on with the agenda. The next item is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests. First is item A, approve agenda as submitted. B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on November 15th, 2021, as on file in the city clerk's office. E, approval of treasures report of claims. E1, approval of Gage area growth and Gage claim in the amount of $28,350.75. E2, approval of balance of treasures report of claims in the amount of $169,035.97. F, approval of Boswa report of claims in the amount of $6,232.59. G, approval of write-off of ambulance bad debts. H, resolution number 6800 repealing various resolutions regarding old policies which are no longer of use or contrary to current city practices. I, resolution number 6801, entering into a lease between the city and Leonard C. Gowen and Maxine I. Gowen for green space and parking on property owned by the city. J, resolution number 6802, entering into a lease between the city and Pamela J. Holdsworth for a garden. K, resolution number 6803, executing an addendum to contract for sale of real estate to amend the closing date with Blue River Holdings LLC. L, resolution number 6804, executing the year-end certification of city street superintendent form. M, resolution number 6805, appointing Jason Moore as the city's certified city street superintendent. N, resolution number 6806, appointing Brad Barron to the City of Beatrice Civil Service Commission. O, resolution number 6807, entering into a three-year lease between the city and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 84 for the purpose of a health and fitness training center for the Beatrice Police Department and a portion of the first and second floor of the Beatrice Police Station. NP, resolution number 6808, approving the emergency shelter activities to provided by the Hope Crisis Center. Is there any item that any council member wants removed from the consent agenda? Gary?
Yeah, H and I.
Anyone else? Rick?
I'll abstain from E1.
All right, so noted.
Did you say H and I?
H and I. Anyone else? Mr. Claybaugh?
I move that the items listed under the consent agenda, with exception of items H and I, be approved, accepted, and are ratified as presented.
Second. By Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that all items listed under the consent agenda be approved with the exception of items H and I. Your vote please. And that is approved 8-0. Rich? I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now it's 8-0. All right, Rick?
I move that item H, resolution number 6800, repealing various resolutions regarding old policies, policies which are of no long of use or contrary to current city practices be passed and approved.
Second. By Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that we further discuss resolution number 6800. Tobias?
Gary, do you have some questions?
Yeah, what, what are we, what old policies are we getting rid of?
So we have a couple in here that we're looking to remove. One is resolution 1906, was passed in 1970, we're during, having regards to cities employees must live within the two-mile zoning jurisdiction. There's one, resolution 2273 from 1975, the state's the same thing. We, Linda Cook showed me today where that one had been repealed in 1993. We just, I couldn't find it earlier. There's a resolution from 1975. It's resolution 2272 that says non-union police will follow the AFSCME contract. We did away with the AFSCME contract in 2013. In 2014, we adopted the non-union handbook. So those things have all kind of folded into there. We haven't formally repealed this one. There are two policies or two resolutions on here about public records procedures. One from 2010, one from 2013. Both of those were updated in 2016. We just didn't, when we pass a resolution that says we revoke any and all resolutions in conflict here with, we just usually put the actual resolution number if we know it. So these two are probably repealed as a result of that. We're just clarifying it, make sure that they are. Same thing as the sexual harassment policy from 1987. We did a new one in 2018. And same thing with the tobacco use policy for employees that we passed in 2018. We passed a new one in 2019. So again, just clarifying some of those things were taken out.
Anyone else? Any comments from the audience? And your vote please. And that is approved 8-0. Resolution 6800 has been passed and adopted. Next is item I.
Resolution number 6801, entering into a lease between the city and Leonard C. Gowen and Maxine L. Gowen for green space and parking on property owned by the city be passed and approved.
Second. By Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that we further discuss number 6801. Gary?
I just wanted to make sure Mr. Nelson has, has read the agreement and that it's like he wanted it to be.
I was provided a copy of the packet.
Any questions or comments, counselor? All right, gentlemen, your vote please. That is approved 8-0. Resolution 6801 has been passed and adopted. Next is a public hearing. Public hearing on acquisition of real property from the Home Heroes LLC, a limited liability company described as follows. The east half of Lot 1, Block 65, original town, now the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, commonly known as 323 Court Street, parcel number 009880000.
This parcel has been under nos and order for demolition since December of 2018. Since that time, we've been working with the property owner, trying to come with some type of resolution. What we ultimately able to do was get the property owner to transfer the property to Home Heroes LLC, which is an LLC out of Lincoln. And then that LLC has agreed to sell it to the city of Beatrice. Purchase price would be $65,000 for the city. We'd look to close on or before December 29th of 2021. So yet this year, if all goes according to plan, at that point, then we will look to see what we need to do to fix up the building and find another buyer and save a building in the downtown.
Everybody knows it's the former Cook Electric Building, okay? Fourth in court. Anyone from the audience? All right. Close the public hearing, Mr. Claybaugh?
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:14 PM.
Second. By Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbach, that the public hearing be closed at 7:14 PM. Your vote please. That is approved 8-0. Next is a public hearing concerning an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a community development block grant in the amount of $435,000 in CDBG funds to aid in the elimination of slum and blight conditions within this, within the area of downtown designated by the city of Beatrice and identified in the city's 2016 downtown revitalization grant, project, sorry.
So this is for our downtown revitalization grant that we were awarded. When we had the first public hearing, our public notice was for $445,000. The state award is $435,000. And so they've asked us to have another public hearing because it's not the same amount as we initially had in our public hearing the first time. It's a reduction of $10,000. Everything's still the same in the project, it's still the same project area. We're still looking to benefit nine different properties in the downtown. We're still looking at projects that will be either facade improvements or upstairs living or removing code compliance issues, hollow sidewalks. Those types of things are all still the type of projects we're looking for in this. And then later tonight, you have a number of resolutions coming up to move this project forward.
Everything stays the same, just eliminates 10,000 bucks. Anyone from the audience? And Mr. Claybaugh?
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:15 PM.
Second. By Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbach, that the public hearing be closed at 7:15 PM. Your vote please. That is approved 8-0. Next is a resolution, resolution number 6809, executing the contract for sale of real estate and all necessary documents to acquire real estate from the Home Heroes LLC.
I move that resolution number 6809 be passed and adopted.
Second. By Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that resolution 6809 be passed and adopted.
Again, this is just the purchase of 323 Court Street, which we've had the public hearing on.
Questions, gentlemen? Audience? And your vote please. And that is approved 8-0. Resolution 6809 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution number 6810, executing the community development block grant agreement number 21 DTR 004 with the Nebraska Department of Economic Development to accept the grant funding in the amount of $435,000 to aid in the elimination of slum and blight conditions within the area of downtown designated by the city and identified in the city's 2016 downtown revitalization project.
I move that resolution number 6810 be passed and adopted.
Second. By Claybaugh, seconded by Fraylon, that resolution 6810 be passed and adopted.
So the first resolution here is to sign the actual contract with the state of Nebraska for the grant itself. As we stated, it's $435,000, $25,000 of which are for administration of the grant. Other than that, the other thing I've noted in here, time of performance is October 26th of 2021 and terminates April 25th of 2024. So it gives us a little time to make sure we get these projects done and taken care of. Now, the rest of the contract is pretty much boilerplate from what the state has and previously. The next thing we'll start working through is the special conditions, environmental reviews, those be kind of the next steps as we move forward.
This is, this is basically the same money that we used before that went so quickly. So do, but my question is, is do all the projects have to be completed by then end date or do they have to be started by?
Done.
Done?
Done.
So get in and get started?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's why we're hoping to have the committee meet here very soon, start the process rolling, and hopefully give you two building cycles.
Okay. So do we have kind of a waiting list because?
Yes, we took pre-applications. We ended up with roughly 50 pre-applications. And we're going to start going through those and see which ones are still eligible, which ones are still interested, kind of run through that list and see if we have nine in there that we want to bring forward to this body for approval.
Do we have a, do you have some parameters for that? I mean, or do they have a, people that were on the list before? I mean, this brand new, completing other projects? I mean, do you have, how do you set in the parameters for who gets what?
That's one thing the committee will sit down and look at and see. Well, you know, like last time we did the same thing, the committee had applications, kind of looked, saw what they thought was going to make the most bang for your buck, if you will, as you looked at different projects and then bring those back to this body for ultimate approval.
Okay. Is that nine in stone or is that going to be determined by the committee?
The contract says, let's see here. The contract reads... I gotta enlarge it, hold on. The contract, the state of Nebraska wants to see us do at least nine.
Minimum nine.
Minimum nine. You can do more if you'd like, but they'd like to see at least nine.
So in theory, you have 50 applications, you could do 40 if you, small ones are 30 medium or whatever the committee decides?
Yes, it says here, the proposed beneficiaries include nine businesses. So yes, you could do 40 of them if you wanted to and give each one a few dollars. I think that's one thing the committee's kind of kicked around in the past. From administration standpoint, and we're not, we're not grant administering this one. Last one though, it's the same paperwork, whether you give this maybe $2,000 or $200,000. But again, we've passed that on to somebody else on this grant.
Will that paperwork be done by us then or send?
Send.
Okay.
And Tobias, is it limited to the pre-applications? No one can come in later now?
We're going to start by looking through the pre-applications. It was that, those individuals who helped us get to this grant by having those and showing the need there, the state really saw what we were trying to do down here and help push us over the top, make sure we got funded. So we want to make sure we look to those applications first. And then if that committee doesn't see anything in there or runs out or doesn't have nine or whatever else, we may come back to this body and look to open them up a second time.
Okay. So do you see this, we were a little hard pressed before that we got the other grant, but this one seems to have come a little sooner. Are these, are these coming in timely manner or they come at a certain time or do you?
These grants?
Yeah.
Probably the most you could ever look to get these is not more often than once every three years. I mean, just, they're not going to give you another one while this one's still open. You had it once before, you did Fifth Street, then you got it again, you did the downtown the first time. And last year, we were not successful partly because your blight study had kind of expired and the state wanted to see us renew that. We did that, we got that taken care of and we came back and reapplied this time and then we're awarded.
So is that one of the reasons that we need to get the new city plan done as well? The comprehensive plan from 16?
No, I think the big reason we're pushing for the, the comp plan, and your comp plan was done in the 90s, is just because things have changed. We probably just need to update the comp plan and make sure we're all still going in the same direction that you guys want to head. I've not seen the comp plan cost us a grant or anything, no.
Okay. Do you think, do you think having send do this was really beneficial for us?
I certainly think it helps. I mean, they've written a number of these and we've written them as well, but they did a good job getting this one and they got the OOR grant as well for us. So, you know, so far they're two for two. We've got a couple more lined up and hopefully they'll be successful in those as well. It's been a good partnership so far.
Any other questions from the audience? All right, gentlemen, your vote please. And that is approved 8-0. Resolution 6810 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution number 6811, adopting the downtown facade improvement program guidelines.
I move that resolution number 6811 be passed and adopted.
Second. By Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbach, that resolution 6811 be passed and adopted.
So one of the things we have to do as part of the grant process is we need to adopt the guidelines. These are guidelines that basically set out what the rules are for the, the grant as we move forward. The state has approved these. These are almost identical to the last time we did a DTR grant in the downtown. So it sets out there the type of improvements that are eligible. Again, brick and masonry restoration, repairs, exterior walls, facade improvements, code violations, hollow sidewalks, roofs, those types of things, life safety are all listed in here as types of eligible projects. It talks about that there is a five-year forgivable loan. So again, somebody has to keep the improvements on their building for five years because if they don't, the city has to pay the money back to the states. And so that's why we do a five-year forgivable loan. If they keep the improvements for those five years, the loan's forgiven and we move forward. They have to get three bids, they have to do Davis Bacon, they have to do SAM.gov registration. So those are federal requirements that they got to follow. And then again, the committee will look through these, come back with recommendations. There talks about a tier-two environmental review that needs to be done. And then we make recommendations in this body. You guys make final determination of who gets awarded. But those are all listed in our guidelines, again, almost identical to the ones we had last time.
Rich?
Since we've expanded north, south, east, and west, where are our lines of downtown actually at now? Because we've expanded quite a bit. We've got some outlaying businesses that might want to use this.
I don't know if we've ever had a formal designation of a downtown, if you will. The area that we use in here was in the 2016, we did a DTR study, our downtown revitalization study that was prepared. In there, they kind of outlined the downtown area and that's just the, the map we've used since then. It's very similar to Main Street's map. No? Is it off a little bit? But that's kind of the map we've used since that, that 2016 study.
Do you think perhaps maybe we should take another look at that and maybe expand on that just a little bit? Because we do have some businesses that have, that have expanded. I don't, it'd be up to the council, but since I think the last time we did that was quite a few years ago and we've, we want to encompass everybody that we can get into this thing if, if there's a use for it.
If you're going to go back and change it, we'd have to change the blight study that was done, which is area number two. That's one thing that has to be updated. And then other than that, we just have to update our, our guidelines to encompass more things as we move forward with the next application.
That's what I was meaning, for the next application, that maybe we could expand this a little bit where we could get some, some businesses otherwise.
Good question. Anyone else? Audience? All right, your vote please. That is approved 8-0. Resolution 6811 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution number 6812, appointing Mr. Doyle, Michael Suthan, Matt Schmidt, Denise Paul, and Tobias Templemeier to the downtown revitalization committee.
I move that resolution number 6812 be passed and adopted.
Second. By Claybaugh, seconded by Fraylon, that resolution 6812 be passed and adopted.
Again, this will be the committee that reviews the applications initially and then brings recommendations back to this body for approval.
Audience? Your vote please. That is approved 8-0. Resolution 6812 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution number 6813, executing the professional services agreement with the southeast Nebraska Development District to retain send as the CDBG administrator.
I move that resolution number 6813 be passed and adopted.
Second. By Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that resolution 6813 be passed and adopted.
Again, this would hire send to be the CBG administrator. Their fee, I believe, is $25,000. You get $25,000 in the grant for administration cost. I am a certified CBG administrator. We could do it in-house, but quite honestly, the amount of time it takes to administer these has become more and more burdensome and just fills up my time. Would be better used doing some other things that we have on the plate, if you will. Also, the state has become more stringent on what they're looking for in these grant administration. And so sometimes it's best to farm those out to somebody else who does them full-time and make sure that all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed.
The monitoring of the Davis Bacon and everything else that just is time consuming.
Yeah, so you start having to figure out that every contractor sends you payrolls every week and then you have to sit down and go through each payroll and make sure that they wrote down the right number of hours, all the hours add up and then they charge the right amount and then taxes were correct. It does get to be quite a tedious task.
What's our cost on this? Any other questions from the audience? And your vote please. And that is approved 8-0. Resolution 6813 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution number 6814, adopting the City of Beatrice, Beatrice Board of Feldic Works Handbook for non-union employees.
I move that resolution number 6814 be passed and adopted.
Second. By Claybaugh, seconded by Fraylon, that resolution 6814 be passed and adopted.
So again, this is our, our non-union handbook. So all your employees that don't fall under a union contract somewhere in the city. So most nobody, look at our department heads, Mars employees at this time, and then ultimately part-time employees, temporary employees, those types of things. We've had a non-union handbook for a number of years, which made it just easier. We put all the vacation, everything in there. What started this was we needed to update the amount of pay for meals for employees. We had a set dollar amount in there before. We wanted to switch it so it followed the GSA rate, so the government rate that's out there. So if you're traveling to a different location, you look there, see what the GSA rate is and then that's what you could get reimbursed for. In doing that, we decided to go ahead and you'll see the training policy coming up and pull that out, make its own policy so it applied to all employees. But the same... But at the same time, then, we just want to clean up a few things in the non-union handbook. We removed reference to a BPW office manager. That position is no longer filled, and so we got rid of that one. Substantially, there was no change in the non-union handbook, just some cleanup language, and then removal of the training policy, again, and making it a reference. And then, again, the next resolution before you is the training policy itself.
Questions? Comments from the public? All right, and your vote please. That is approved eight zero. Resolution sixty-eight fourteen has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution number sixty-eight fifteen, adopting the training policy regulating city employees' requests to participate in or be reimbursed for any training or continuing education conferences, seminars, or meetings.
I move that resolution number sixty-eight fifteen be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbuck, that resolution sixty-eight fifteen be passed and adopted.
Nothing is changing in our training policy from what we had before, but we want to make sure we pull it out of the non-union handbook, make it its own policy so it makes sure it applied to all employees the same, unless their union contract says otherwise. And then in the non-union handbook, we simply reference back to this policy. So if an employee wants to travel, and most normally wants to travel out of state or overnight someplace, they've got to make sure they talk to their department head. They've got to fill out a form beforehand that says, here's what we expect the fees to be for room and board, meals, transportation, all those things. Their department head signs off on it, and then when they come back, they turn that same form back in with their receipts in order to get reimbursed. But other than that, the only real change, again, was the meals itself is going to make sure we follow the GSA rate, the government rate that's out there. Because anybody who's traveled knows that a ten-dollar meal in Lincoln is significantly different than a ten-dollar meal in Tampa, Florida.
Is that true?
I can verify that. Questions? From the audience? And your vote please. That is approved eight zero. Resolution sixty-eight fifteen has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance amending section five dash one of the Beatrice City Code regarding the definition of large animals.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-one dash fifty-four. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number twenty-one dash fifty-four. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote please. That is approved eight zero. Resolution, or I beg your pardon, ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-four by number the first time, ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-four by number the second time, and ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-four by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-four be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-four be passed and approved.
So the, the ordinance today for a large animal defines, basically says you can't have large animal town. It defines cattle, horses, mules, sheep, goats, those kind of things. But then it says except pet animals and unusual animals. Well, the pet animals are never defined. And unusual, unusual animals are defined, but they're already not allowed under a different code section. So we thought it would be best to just go back and clean this up, remove the exception for pet animals. We don't want somebody to come in and say they have a pet pig at their house, right? It just kind of defeats the purpose of the ordinance that we have. And then again, unusual animals are already covered in another section, and so there's no need to state those yet again in here as an exception to large animals. So that's the only change that we're proposing.
Questions? Anyone from the audience? All right, your vote please. And that is approved eight zero. Ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-four has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance providing for establishing and creating wards and election districts and establishing the boundary lines thereof.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-one dash fifty-five. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number twenty-one dash fifty-five. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Again, a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote please. And that is approved eight zero. Ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-five by number the first time, ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-five by number the second time, and ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-five by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-five be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-five be passed and approved.
So once a decade, we have to do this. Every time they get a census done, we finally get the numbers, we go through and make sure our wards are equally populated. The interesting fact is, is there's really no law on how many people to put in a ward. General practice is you try to be with plus or minus five percent. And so we took the total population, you divide it by four, because we have four wards. Believe that number comes out to be three thousand and sixty-five people. And then each ward has to be within plus or minus five percent of that number. And so these are the wards that we came up with. Don Hill at the county did a great job helping us as well. She had her map, and then we were able to verify that our wards worked well for her. So we didn't end up with a block here or there that was a special type of ballot. The only change we are proposing is a three-block stretch between Ninth Street and Tenth Street from Ella to Grant. Those three blocks would transfer from the second ward to the third ward.
That's a little notch, you see.
It's, it's a little notch, it keeps getting bigger and bigger, just above the pink there. But yes, that just had to move over one block in order to make sure that we were in compliance with what the state kind of gives us guidelines for population distribution.
How many people are you, how many people is that?
Yeah, somewhere in that ballpark, three hundred-ish, give or take. Ward number two from, on this census from the last one added BSDC. So that, I think, if you look at the census map, is about a hundred people. Kind of reason why it pulled it that way just a little bit. The college didn't have very many residents, full-time residents. So there was not a lot that direction. But with that one change, we believe we will be in compliance for another decade.
Very good. Questions? The audience? Okay. Your vote please. And that is approved eight zero. Ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-five has been passed and approved. Next is an ordinance to convey real estate owned by the city to Twin Rivers Chrysler Jeep Dodge Incorporated.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-one dash fifty-six. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbuck, that the ordinance be given number twenty-one dash fifty-six. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote please. That is approved eight zero. Ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-six by number the first time, ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-six by number the second time, and ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-six by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-six be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbuck, that ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-six be passed and approved. Tobias?
What we are proposing is that the city owns a lot on South LaSalle Street. We acquired part of it. If you remembered, it was owned by Jonathan Davis. It was damaged in the little tornado that came through town. Oh, boy, twenty-fifteen, twenty-seventeen, somewhere in that ballpark. That house then sat in a damaged state for a number of years before we were finally able to get demolished and get it cleaned off there. And then just recently, we acquired that back little section from Robert Sandersfeld, who owned the property to the north there. And so we were able to join all of our property together and sell the entire lot to Twin Rivers. And that's what we're proposing. Sale price would be five thousand dollars. Closing would be sometime in January. Most notably because as part of our agreement with Mr. Sandersfeld, we had him leave the garages that were there, and we will demolish those and clean them off before we transfer the property to Twin Rivers.
Stand. I have to abstain for the next two.
Okay. So noted. Any questions, gentlemen? Anyone from the audience? And your vote please. That is seven in favor.
Abstain, Rich?
I have, yes, I have to abstain.
And Mr. Kerr abstains. Ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-six has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution number sixty-eight sixteen, executing a contract for sale of real estate and all necessary documents to Twin Rivers Chrysler Jeep Dodge Incorporated.
I move that resolution number sixty-eight sixteen be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Frayland, that resolution sixty-eight sixteen be passed and adopted.
Same thing as simply the contract we just discussed.
Any questions? All right, your vote please. And that is approved, seven in favor and one abstention. Resolution sixty-eight sixteen has been passed and adopted. Next is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of items by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anyone here for the public forum? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to discussion and reports. And we're going to have a, kind of a recap of Clean City Beatrice two thousand twenty-one. Street Superintendent and Mars Manager, Director, Jason Moore is going to give us a report. Jason?
Good evening, gentlemen. Looking at the paperwork, I'm assuming has been put out in your packets tonight. One thing I'd like to look at, I guess, to start off. Last year, we, we started a different computer program that we use for us to run our Clean City. In years past, when people would call in, we would have Jean at, at the service center. She would document everything on paper. My guys would then get a stack about what seemed like this high for twelve hundred stops. We would divide them all out through the day, and we would divide them out through the loaders, and each one would take a handful of stacks of papers. They would go through, and everything was done by pencil. We would cross it off, or we would write on there, completed and whatnot. So last year, we started this Clean City dashboard. And so it's, it's really a nice program. It did work out really well for us. I can go into it just a little bit here in a minute, and, but I wanted to at least kind of show that we did use this Clean City dashboard again this year. If you look at some of the numbers that we have, two thousand twenty-one, number of locations, we had eleven hundred and forty-three locations that we had, that we had total. With that, again, Monday was our highest volume day. We had five hundred and one total. When you take away, if you look at this screen or this page, I'm assuming you guys have got, you can see that Lake submits what was already picked up, partial pickups declined, and then what we completed at four hundred and three stops on Monday. Tuesday, we had two hundred and twenty-five that were completed after you take away what was already picked up, what was partially picked up, or what was declined. And so if you go back over and you look at the amount of money spent for two thousand twenty-one, we spent seventeen thousand dollars even. That was for eleven hundred and forty-three locations, which was less than last year's twelve hundred and forty-nine locations. If you look at the summary of the citywide cleanup, it goes to show Monday was, again, our biggest day with eighty-nine and a half man-hours. But if you, with five hundred and one stops, but if you drop down to Wednesday, and you look, we had three hundred and sixty-three stops, but we had more man-hours. I think that just goes to show on some of the locations, we had more items that we picked up, more smaller items, took a little more time for the guys to pick up and throw them into, into the loader and then get loaded into the trucks. So, but all in all, it was a good Clean City for us. We didn't have any accidents, any injuries. And whenever you're dealing with large equipment such as dump trucks and loaders in some narrower streets that may have cars parked on both sides, whenever you can have a deal like this, go on and not have any problems, I consider that to be a good, a good deal. And so one of the, one of the items that I'd like to look at on this sheet here, it goes to show that we had ten thirty-yard roll-offs that were filled full of mattresses this year again. We had, I, I think that's something that administration we may need to take a look at and see if maybe there's a way for us to improve on that. We do have a lot of out-of-state, which we've seen Kansas plates, and we also have out-of-county plates that we had vehicles. We had fifth-wheel or gooseneck trailers that were leaving the location. So we know there was, we know there was some abuse on that one. So, but going back to the dashboard program, it's kind of a neat deal. If you zoom in on certain areas, you can see our green circles are places that we had hit and locations that were picked up. And if you look at, zoom in here, you can see the red circles are items that were missed, pardon me, that we did not pick up because of a certain reason. Again, lumber on this one here. You can go back and click on other ones. It's really nice, because what happens is, I have this on my phone, Jean has it right there at her desktop. Anybody who calls in and says, hey, why haven't these items been picked up? Or why didn't my material get picked up? We can go back and we can look and see, take a look right directly at what it is, and, and go and, and take a look, and, and give them an explanation about what it was, that why it wasn't picked up. If... Some of them don't show pictures here. I'm trying to find you guys a couple of pictures to show why items were not picked up.
What does the yellow mean?
What's that?
What's the yellow or orange?
The yellow ones are supposed to be, they were supposed to be changed to a red circle. And, and they didn't get changed to a red circle for us. Small items like this could have been thrown into your, it's small, looks like small TV monitors or computer monitor, maybe. Could have been thrown in your garbage can. Too many small items like that that could be thrown into a can, it just takes time. And again, this isn't a garbage cleanup. It's, it's for us to do a large, large item cleanup. So let's see if I can zoom in on this one here, maybe we can figure out what this one here is. But, no. But it, it does go and show, it's nice, again, because we can look at, when we do have my trucks out, the trucks have the iPads, it'll show directional arrows. So I can look up and I can see where my trucks are. If Ted calls me and says, hey, I have items out in front of my house that haven't been picked up yet, why haven't, why haven't they been picked up? I can pull up the map, I can look and see where the loader is for that area. I can see the direction he's traveling, and I can see the colored icons behind him that may come up and say that he's been down these streets so far. I can let him know that right now he's two blocks south of you, and he's working his way your way. And so it, it does work out really nice for us to be able to keep track of the guys, the equipment. And, again, that was the same one, but... It's a nice up, you know, upgrade over what we've had in the past, but... I'm going to find you guys some good pictures here. You know, honestly, that what we did not have this year, I didn't see, you know, stuff like this. But really, I didn't have a great deal of, of material that I could look back like we've had in years past where, where it was, it was just a mess. We really, you know, we really didn't have that this year. If you look at something like this, you can say, yeah, well, boxes, bags, garbage, there's reasons, lumber. So, but we would come by a lot of these, and you would pick up partial loads. And so maybe we would have went by this, and there'd have been a refrigerator or a couch at this one. We would have picked up the couch, we would have left this material behind. And so that's where you...
Or somebody else did that.
Or somebody else did that.
Spread it out there.
Yeah, because, exactly.
Went through it.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah. Exactly.
It's been a little more compartmentalized, maybe you guys could have got it, but somebody didn't help you there.
Yeah, exactly. And, and so, you know, what we're looking at, you know, there's just, again, something small like that could, would have went into a garbage can. So we, we took a picture, but it does take time for us to stop, take the iPad, take a picture, and then the guys have to type in what it is. It's, it's still faster than what it was before, because the guy would have had to have taken a pencil and paper, wrote down a reason why we didn't pick it up, and then we'd have went to the next one. So, and then we'd have had to have had Jean call each loader and try and find out, where are you at? Why haven't you been here? And is there a reason why you didn't pick up a certain material from a certain place? So it, you know, it's definitely, this has been one of the better Clean Cities that we've had. I would say that as long as we can come up with a plan for the mattresses, we always have some good ones in here. Let's see what happens here. So lumber, bags of garbage, boxes, can't tell what that is. But everything there from here looks like it's material that we, we don't pick up. So with that being said, again, like I, I think it was a, it was a good Clean City. I think it's still... I think it's still being, what did we start, in nineteen eighty-nine? So we've been doing this for, you know, what, thirty-two years now? I think for what it is, you know, back, I want to say two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, we had a really rough year in there where we had a lot of garbage that was out. We, we really went back and, and changed, stressed what we were gonna, what we were gonna pick up, and that what Clean City really was, and that was for a large item pickup. Since then, you know, we've, we've done a lot better of what we pick up. I think we've maybe got the information out, you know? We really tried to get it out as much as possible, what we are picking up. And, and this year, I think what really helped us too is the price of scrap iron is so high that there weren't any washing machines, there weren't any dryers, there, there really was, lawn mowers were gone, and we never, we never got any of that picked up. So it was all gone before we got there.
So you've done this in the spring for a long time, and this year was in the fall, which did you guys like better?
I liked the temperature in October and the, the less likelihood of getting snow the first week of October than we do in May, because, I'm sorry, in April, because April, we've had some pretty cold, dreasy, yucky days doing it. But in April, we're slower. October, I'm trying to wrap up asphalt, I'm trying to wrap up concrete projects, you know? And so this year, we did it because of the bridge, bridge projects. You know, we, we will probably have a bridge project this next summer on South Sixth, so I believe Tobias and I will sit down and, and come up with a plan of what we want to do for Clean City again this next year.
What do you prefer?
Honestly, I don't care. I really don't care. If, if, if you, if you were to make me say this one, spring, just because we have less things going on. But we can move it around.
Or you could do them both, you have half as much each time.
You'd have the same amount both times. You'd have the same amount.
Have same amount of mattresses, that's for sure.
That's the one thing I've realized, is that no matter how many times we do this, people still have junk and they still put it out, so.
It's a great service.
It is.
It is, Ted, you're right. It's a great service to the community. I just wish there wasn't so many abuses and, and people would just understand what, what it's all about.
I tell you what, when we just keep rolling those thirty-yard roll-offs across, and, and what this doesn't show is, we probably took two thirty-yard roll-offs off of railroad property that, there was a, there was a, an empty storage container down there on railroad property that throughout the year, people just kept throwing mattresses in. And, and so they would bring them out a, a couple of times, and they would take them out and get rid of them. And finally, oh, about a week or so before Clean City, the rail master got ahold of me, and he's like, hey, he says, let's make a, let's make a deal here. He says, you help me, I'll help you, and we'll get rid of the whole thing. So we went in, we picked up the mattresses and, and the storage container went away. So.
Any other questions?
You are, you are saying that they're, they're abiding by our rules a little bit more, with the education in then?
I think so. It's better than it was, like I said, about two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, we had a really rough year in there. You know, we've, we've seen, you know, we've seen piles in front of houses that, probably two dump truck loads full of stuff out in front of a house, and, and most of it was small bags and boxes of garbage and whatnot. So a couple of years ago, you know, we had boxes full of dirty diapers, I picked up the one, and it fell all over the ground. And, you know, that type of stuff is not what Clean City was meant for. It, it just isn't. And so we had a, you know, we really talked about it, and we really, I think we, we stressed after that what Clean City was for. This year, it, honestly, it was one of the better years. If we could, if we can, if we can come up with a plan for the mattresses, this would have been a perfect year.
Kerry?
A bit unrelated, but I called up before the Thanksgiving holiday three times down there. Nobody answered the phone.
Where at?
Down to Mars or whatever that is.
Mars for?
I wanted to find out the pickup for the holidays.
Oh.
Regular garbage.
Nobody answers the phone at Mars. Everything is down at City Hall. The number has two-two-eight fifty-two-hundred, extension four.
That's where I ended up calling, but you had a number that was down there.
I don't know if we have...
I don't think we have that number anymore.
We don't have a phone down there.
Okay.
I don't have a landline. We, we don't have any phones down there.
But it said for Mars, and I pushed that and didn't get anybody.
Okay, so if you push that, it would have sent you to Kerry, and then it's just a matter of trying to find out what we had going on there for that. So I just have to find out with Kerry, would have to see if you left, did you leave a voicemail? If not, then we just need to find out, because if you, if you hit the button for Mars, it should send you to Kerry down at City Hall.
Okay.
And so, and then with, with the Christmas holiday coming up, we, we will have that Friday pickup on Monday. And so New Year's Day, again, when I say Friday, Friday's our recognized holiday, so our Friday pickups will be on Monday. And so we'll always try to move things one way or the other. And then, and then with Thanksgiving, we had Thursday pickup on Wednesday, and we had Friday pickup on Monday. So made for, Wednesday made for a long day, Wednesday and Thursday, because they're, they're both big routes. The west side, really, the Wednesday is, Wednesday is the day that takes the longest amount of time for us to get done. Just, you wouldn't think it, but it takes one guy the entire, probably till one-thirty on our side loaders in town. It'll take him one-thirty, one-forty-five to get the west side done. The other truck does the Belvedere, the area around the old hospital around Chautauqua, Casey's, and Belvedere, and he'll, he'll do all that, and then he does the highway south of town also, by, in the, in the same amount of time it takes for the gentleman on the west side, just because the number of stops.
Still seems awful fast.
I tell you what, we're, we're pretty quick. We can get Mondays done by, we have Mondays done by nine forty-five. We can have them done. And then we've found out that by working through, by working through a bout of COVID that worked itself through, through Mars, we found out that you can, you, one side loader can get an area done. It just takes every, about an hour of overtime, and he can get everything done, maybe an hour and a half of overtime if he's scrambling. So it's, it's, it does take some time, but we can get it done. Guys, the guys have really, really excelled. We're in it now eight months. For where we're at right now, I'm extremely happy with, with where we're at on our garbage service.
Good. Any other questions? Anyone from the audience? Thank you, Jason.
You bet.
Good job. Our next meeting is going to be on December twentieth, and there will be a work session on December twenty-seventh. With that, Mr. Claybaugh, I suggest we go into executive session.